We ready to get started? Thank you, Eric. Everybody ready? Yeah. All right. So tonight, we're going to have our budget workshop. We've been working hard the last few months to get everything organized and into a readable packet. So we have the budget presentation tonight. I wanted to start with the discussion on the mill levy. I have a separate front cover sheet for everyone. So in the budget packet itself, I recommended a reduction of two mills for property tax. And I just wanted to be very transparent on the front here because I did get a few questions about it. So the original mill is fifteen point seven five for the city. And that would have translated if there is no Senate Bill twenty three dash three oh three of two point seven million dollars in property tax revenue. If Senate Bill twenty three dash three oh three passes, it would make approximately two point six million in property tax revenue for the city. So I have on the next row here, what it would look like if we temporarily reduce the mill by two mills down to thirteen point seven five. And so essentially, the city would return three hundred and forty seven thousand if Senate Bill twenty three dash thirty two does not pass. And three hundred and twenty nine thousand if it does. And that for the median home property, which was five hundred and twenty thousand, that would be seventy dollars without Senate Bill twenty three oh three, three oh three and sixty three dollars if it is. Is there any questions on this sheet before we dive into the budget? Okay. All right, then let's get started.
Is the amount that's in the budget, Aaron? Does that, is it the reduced reduced amount or is it the original fifteen point seven five mil amount?
In the budget, I split the difference between the two at thirteen point seven five. So in the budget, I did a ten percent increase, which is two point three million.
Okay, thank you.
So in the budget itself, I did the, I split the difference between if they're, oops. Running the PowerPoint too. In the budget itself, I did do thirteen point seven five mills as opposed to fifteen point seven five. And it's approximately two point three million for property tax. And again, that can be decided once we get into the actual budget in November. But I just wanted to be very transparent as to how I came up with the projection. All right, so on September seventh, we had our budget work session. And during that work session, we identified from the council several priorities. Those were capital improvement planning, landscape and beautification, staff supplies, tools and equipment, and improving medians along Highway twenty four. Those were the major items that I heard from council that were a priority of yours. And so those have all been incorporated into the budget. And that's how we've kind of worked off of what your priorities were. From last year, when we had gone through and identified the overall priorities of the city from council, we had public safety. I'm sorry, public safety, staff attraction and retention, housing and zoning, transportation utilities, economic development, and well managed city budget and finances. So all of these are also still incorporated into this budget as well. All right, so basically, the way this presentation goes is it follows right along with the book. It goes right in the same order. So what I've done is I've tried to take out every single thing that has been added to the budget and put into this presentation so that it's very transparent and clear as to what we have changed in this year's budget. So if we look on slide four, we have the capital improvement planning. So a number of council members had expressed desire for capital improvement projects. And we have the Meadowwood Sports Complex study and further build out. So that is included in our budget this year. We have City Hall renovations and improvements and also the fiber project. So for the City Hall renovations and improvements, we are not at the point yet where we have full engineering specs to actually give a real number. So what we've done in the budget is we put a two point four million dollar capital reserve. So that once we have that engineering done, we have funds available that we can then bring back to council and say, this is what it's going to cost. This is what the plans are. Do we want to move forward or do we want to do something different? So that's the thought process there.
So is that a full, is that a scrape and a start over?
That would be for remediation and improvements as opposed to a full scrap. You can go ahead, yeah.
Yeah, so those improvements would be security improvements for vestibules in the front hall. They would also be facade improvements around the entire building as well as an enclosed walkway where you come in onto the second level. Those include HVAC and fire suppression improvements, the park and recreation door. And basically making the building compliant without expanding any space.
Yes. And then also engineering for the additional crease.
Thank you.
So I, I talked with Aaron about the potential of this roof's flat, this recent issue. When you're looking at doing HVAC, et cetera. Would it be worthwhile considering when you're looking at doing construction recommendation, that's putting a second floor, which gives you the ability for space, which takes care of all of HVAC, solves the problem of leaky, a flat roof. And meets our future need.
No.
Yeah, that would be a great thing that we could look at during the engineering phase of that to make sure that the existing foundation can support that.
That was the question, the foundations would handle it, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, so the next priority area we had was staff supplies, tools and equipment. So in this area, we have vehicle replacements, which we have in this budget. We have seven vehicle replacements across facilities and grounds, fleet and police. And then we also last year in last year's budget, we did small additions for bolstering funding for tools and replacement vehicles, parts and maintenance and vehicle fuel. And all of those things that we added in last year's budget are kept the same in the twenty four budget. All right, for competitive staff compensation in this year's budget, we have a merit pool of two hundred and sixty four thousand in the general fund for employees who met performance expectations in twenty twenty three. Doing that merit increase for performance. And then we also have a cola increase, which is estimated at sixty six thousand, which is a two percent cola in July of twenty twenty four. And then median and cross rock, so crosswalk. So we had funding for both these items is budgeted out of the Streets Capital Improvement Fund. The city is working with Keep Wood in the Park Beautiful to improve the medians by installing art bases and stamped concrete for ease of maintenance. And I know that was something we heard a lot about in the past few months about making sure those medians look groomed and nice. So I believe that this is going to be a huge improvement for the city and also for our crews. And then we also have improvements to the crosswalk at Highway twenty four in Chester. That's all, yeah, he wanted to talk about that a little.
Yes, there's a phased approach to this analysis on that crosswalk there because any crosswalk that is put in needs to interface with the rest of the light system across the whole network to make sure that it works. And so C dot has very strict criteria and installing those flashing V skins. So what we've already done is initiated with our on-call engineering firm to do the study of the trip. Counts for folks crossing there to make sure that we would be competitive in that criteria before going through the full plan, design set and build out of those potential improvements.
You could just count the missing flags.
Oh, yes.
Missing flags. They take the flags as souvenirs after they cross the road.
Oh.
You're correct, we need more flags right now.
We do need more flags. We always have to put more flags on.
Are we missing them right now? Are they empty? There's oh geez, okay. We will take a look at that. Apparently, a nice souvenir when you come visit the city, right?
Well, in twenty twenty three, you shouldn't be waving a flag to cross twenty four. I wouldn't think. You know, it, you know, it's risky as it is, so.
Correct. All right, okay, so fund balance. As I presented a few weeks ago, we had a significant amount of vacancy savings. And we also had unexpected revenues with the DDA paying off their loan early. So our unrestricted fund balance reserve is extremely high at the end of twenty twenty three of an estimate of fifty percent. It's how I think we're going to end the year. And then in this year's budget with the two point four million dollar capital reserve and everything budgeted in, I expect the unrestricted fund balance reserve to be twenty one point nine percent. So I know the council's goal has been to be at seventeen percent, so I, I found this to be very reasonable. Okay. All right, so revenues, I know we went over this a few weeks ago, but our two thousand twenty three year in projection, we are five hundred and three thousand over budget. Our year end expectation is fourteen point nine million dollars. And that it does include the DDA's full repayment of their loan. In two thousand twenty four, we have the general fund revenue projected to be at fifteen point two million dollars, which is a six percent increase over last year's budget. And that includes a three percent increase in sales tax and a ten percent projected increase in property tax.
Aaron, on the year end projection for twenty twenty three, when you say over budget by five hundred and three thousand plus, does that include the set aside the reserve? Or is that?
Yes, so this is just the revenue projection, so it's five hundred and three thousand dollars more in revenue.
Gotcha, gotcha. Never mind.
This, this slide right here, the one before where I go into the unrestricted fund balance, that includes everything. Yeah, it, I probably should have worded that a little different. Okay, let's see. Okay, other notable changes to the general fund revenue, lodging tax transfer. We had a two hundred and two thousand dollar decrease in the transfer to the general fund from two thousand twenty three in our twenty four budget. And that is because we're going to remove the two economic development positions at this time. And then the Streets Capital Improvement Transfer is going to be five hundred and ten thousand this year in two thousand twenty four. And the additional funds for that will be used to cover the Streets personnel costs. Okay, then we have expenditures. So expenditures for two thousand twenty three are very under projection at five hundred and fifty three thousand. So we spent five hundred and fifty three thousand less than we had projected. Most of that was personnel costs, personnel costs were down seven hundred and ninety two thousand. We had vacancies across the city, including city manager and assistant to the city manager, which make up a big piece of that. So that, that's where that comes from, but that was twelve percent under where we expected to be when we made the budget originally. Okay, so for two thousand twenty four, we expect expenditures to increase one million, one hundred and forty nine thousand, which is an eight percent over two thousand twenty three. The total projected expenditures are fifteen point five million. And you can see that's an eight point three percent increase over last year. And then just to reiterate some of the significant additions that we had, these are a lot of the items we just went over, but a two percent cola in July of twenty twenty four. Two hundred and sixty six thousand for merit compensation adjustments, which will be based on performance evaluations that were from twenty twenty three. In this budget, we are requesting a total of two point five new positions to be added across several departments. And I will go into those in detail as we move in. We had mandated cost increases for workers' compensation and property casualty insurance, which was about ninety one thousand to the general fund. We had increases in custodial and parks maintenance were about sixty five thousand. And that's not just an increase in custodial services. We also added some of the things that they're doing. It's not like they just raised the price on us. And then we have the election cost in twenty twenty four for the city election, which will be thirty thousand, which we didn't have budgeted in twenty twenty three, but we will have that expense.
So Aaron, I see that you're gonna, you told, you're gonna talk about the new positions.
Absolutely.
So you're reducing two from the economic development. Correct. That two in addition to the minus two, so is it really four point five?
The total increase will be point five.
The total increase will be point five.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I was gonna.
Okay, good. You'll, you'll cover it. We'll, we'll go in detail on that, absolutely. Okay, capital projects, we have the four replacement vehicles for the police department. And these are going to be replacement for patrol vehicles that are high mileage or high years or both. We have three vehicle replacement scheduled for Public Works. It's a hundred and ninety seven thousand to replace two vehicles in facilities and grounds and seventy seven thousand to replace one F two fifty and fleet. We have the fiber project, so we are anticipating being able to do two phases in twenty twenty four for our fiber project. We're budgeting two hundred and fifty thousand. And we do believe with grant matches that that will be the total expense that the city will have to put out. But we obviously don't know until we get into those phases to be able to apply for the grants. But that is the expectation that we will be able to apply for quite a bit of funding to do the rest of those phases. And then we have the Meadowwood Sports Complex Capital Outlay. We put fifty thousand dollars in there for planning and engineering for pickleball courts at Meadowwood and also to have that study done. All right, then we have our grants fund. So we do have our funds remaining, we have four hundred and eleven thousand dollars still that needs to be appropriated. And twenty twenty four is really the last year we have to spend the money unless we have it appropriated and requisitioned for twenty five or twenty six. So ideally, we'll spend all of that money in twenty twenty four. And what we're looking to do is finish the fire suppression and put HVAC in the U-Pass Cultural Center. And also to use twenty five thousand as a grant match for Meadowwood Park to have that study done. So that's where the, the other twenty five thousand of that comes from. Okay, DDA. DDA, we have one million dollars projected in tax increment financing. Their revenues obviously go up because the property taxes went up, so they got a pretty huge bump from this. They have a hundred and thirty thousand budgeted for TIF reimbursements and their total budget is projected at five hundred and seventy two thousand for next year. The fund is anticipated at the end of the year, next year to be at one million, three hundred and thirty seven thousand. So that is their fund balance after now they've sold the land on the books. We were holding that land at one million, sixty thousand. They sold it for eight hundred thousand, so their fund balance went down a little bit from where it was originally. It was about one point five, now it'll be at one point three. So that's the difference. If you're looking at that sheet and say, hey, what, what happened to the fund balance? That's the reason we were holding that land at a higher value than what it sold for.
Aaron?
Yes.
On that, the tax increment financing for the DDA fund, does that take into consideration the, the potential for the mill levy reduction?
It does.
Okay, thank you.
And Aaron, did you receive anything from Tony? After the DDA meeting when we voted on it? Because I, I see a small, probably misunderstanding because I made the motion.
Okay.
For the twenty twenty three, we had shifted five thousand dollars from the professional services to legal services, which brought that up from twenty five up to thirty K.
Okay.
You reflected that. Then I made the, the same motion to keep the budget the same for twenty twenty four with that transfer. And what I see is it went back to ten thousand instead of in professional services. That should still be five.
Oh.
And thirty.
Okay, so you got it. We'll get that updated.
Unless somebody came back to you and corrected what my motion was, the motion was for that to be five and thirty.
Understood, we'll get that fixed. Thank you. And there were a few, I, I meant to say this at the beginning, there were a few items that we noticed that we didn't get updated from last year. There was a couple of little items, we are going to fix those. Grace and I were working remotely, she, she was wherever she is and I was here. And we did an awesome job, I think together, Grace was such a blessing, but we did miss a couple of items that we will fix. Just so everyone is aware, if you see some typos or you notice, oh, that language is twenty three, it's because of that. There were a few, we, we caught most of them, but just if you, if you're noticing that, I have a list, so we'll, we'll get that fixed where the final goes out. All right. Okay, this is, okay, now that was DDA, so now we're moving into the cultural center. So here's an overview of the cultural center. Normally I do this as a narrative, but I figured it'd be easier with a graph. So in twenty twenty four for Park and Rec, we're looking at a general fund investment of two eighty nine. Cultural Center, we're looking at a general fund investment of twenty six thousand. And Aquatic Center, we're looking at a general fund investment of four hundred and ninety five thousand. So that is culture and rec. So you can see the culture, the cultural center is still doing excellent. I mean, it's, they, they're moving strides to reduce the general fund investment every year. And then Park and Rec in Aquatic Center, most of the increases you're seeing there are due to personnel costs. We are seeing significant minimum wage increases year after year. And so that's, the general fund has to subsidize those increases because that's just, they're kind of unfunded mandates on us. All right, then we, next we have lodging tax fund. So in lodging tax fund, our two thousand twenty three year in projection is four hundred and forty two thousand for revenue. And we're, as I've showed you in the graphs every month, I mean, it's kind of all over the place. One month it's up twenty percent, one, one month it's down ten. So I do think it's going to be pretty flat from last year. The two thousand twenty four revenue projection. This is kind of a, just a stab in the dark, but I'm going with three hundred and nine thousand, which is essentially forty percent of our lodging tax revenue comes from hotels. Sixty percent comes from short-term rentals. I cut the short-term rentals in half for this projection and came up with three hundred and nine thousand. So that's the projection I'm using in here. The expenditure budget is three hundred and twenty one thousand. And then I just have a note about the special election that will take place on December twelfth. And Conservation Trust Fund, no change, it's seventy five thousand, it has been for the last several years. And we literally bring that revenue in and send it right out to Culture and Rec and Aquatic Center. Okay, and then I will let Ben walk through the Streets Capital.
All right, so in keeping with the woodland park plans for our comprehensive plan under the, the transportation section, we're really looking when we're doing streets projects to do complete streets. And this means instead of just doing a mill and overlay or new asphalt mats between curb to curb, that we're really fixing everything. So this means parking, this means sidewalks connectivity, this means drainage. This means potentially, if we know development is happening, setting up plans and sleeves for the future so that we're not having to cut the road again for another twenty, thirty years is the idea. So the four projects that we have programmed for next year are Lake, which includes Park Street. That section next to Memorial Park. And this will add, this project, the reason it took a long time to design was there was a sewer extension that happened. There was galvanized water relocations, there was setting up future stubs for replacing water lines, there's drainage improvements. And then there's the design to effectively double the amount of parking and get rid of those ditches along Park Street. So we're really trying to target to do everything that needs to be done with those streets. We also have Browning along, on the west side of town. And there's a number of drainage issues if you've driven that street that need to be addressed with removing those ditches. A detailed drainage report tying into a C dot system, which requires C dot interface and an access permit there as well as sidewalk connectivity down through there. And the really good benefit and then is that we won some MMOF grant fund dollars for the sidewalk extensions along Browning and Lake. So we're, we're pretty excited to be able to use those for those projects in twenty twenty four. The other project is the rebuild of Duel. This includes undergrounding the power lines that are there. And this is a particularly tough street because it was technically an alley that's being used as a two-way street. So we've got to bring this all into compliance, looking at changing that to a one-way street, addressing the drainage issues and rehabbing the monuments along there as well. And then we also have Pine Ridge, which is a small section south of Duel, where we're looking at doing some galvanized water line replacement, fixing some vertical curves and some drainage issues along there. So that's what we've been doing is the in-depth design of all those four projects in twenty twenty three. Okay, so street repairs, as you saw with our organic on-call contract, there were a number of large patches that the city crews do not have the equipment. We don't have a big lay down machine to be able to do these large patches throughout the city. So we hired, we solicited and hired an on-call asphalt and concrete contractor to do these bigger patches. But as water main breaks happen throughout the city or large patches form, we really want to get those bigger jobs done with on-call contractors and then the smaller potholes our crews can take care of. So that's what the street repairs, the street concrete repairs. There's a number of concrete issues throughout the city as you drive throughout. We're trying to address those as they tie into the storm system. And these can include curb gutter sidewalk, storm inlets that go in there as well as some of the concrete repairs along the medians in twenty four. Parking lot improvements, Cavalier Park is due for reconstruction, so we'd like to reconstruct that the same way that we did behind the U-Pass Cultural Center this year. And then street restriping, since we've restripped the entire city last year and then again this year. And those, that striping would be under warranty. We're going to skip this year and just use that ten thousand dollars for minor striping that comes up. And then program that back in for twenty twenty five. And then sidewalk improvements, this is part of the MMOF funds that we got as a partnership through C dot. These are addressing all the ADA ramps that were identified in the, the non-compliance plan that we would like to replace and fix to bring into compliance. This also includes repaving of the trail along sixty seven for a long section and minor sidewalk connections there. And then replacement vehicles, we would like to replace a heavy duty truck for, for snow removal.
So with those replacing of trucks within streets, is that because you're trying to make them available for folks to drive who don't have CDLs? Is that kind of part of the, the theory behind that?
No, this one is actually a large tandem dump truck. So it's, we actually have several CDL drivers now in the crew.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
So that's not a problem anymore.
Correct, it's, yeah, it's miraculous. It is truly.
Sure, you've all seen the green trucks spewing smoke around town. And that's the one we're looking at replacing.
Oh, gotcha. It's what, thirty years old? I forget, I, I was told how old it was and I actually almost like fell over.
It is, it's gotten great useful life.
Okay, go.
So I have a quick question, just logistically. We have quite a significant fund balance in that fund. And is it because of the ability to get the work done that we're not doing more?
That's part of it, yes. So as you know, there's been turnover in my position as a city engineer quite a bit over the past couple of years. That fund balance has been allowed to accrue. It's really tough to start and stop projects if you're not in there from the beginning. And so I've spent a lot of time laying the foundation so that we're always a year ahead of the next project. So we have shovel-ready projects, so like twenty twenty three, not a lot got done because I'm setting the foundation for twenty twenty four, we can move through. We've also hired a project manager who's dedicated towards that job. We, I mean, like every Public Works job, we all split duties, but this person is dedicated just to doing capital projects. And the benefit is they can be out there with the contractors, they can be processing the day-to-day items, the pay app. So we're keeping real close tabs on what's going on to keep doing that. So that was the intent of the project manager position.
So hopefully, beginning in twenty five, we'll see a greater expenditure of those reserves in that capital fund, yes?
Correct, and actually it programmed, yeah, in twenty twenty four to twenty twenty five, we're actually going to deplete that fund balance quite a bit for the five million dollars worth of these larger road projects.
Because that's what capital funds are for.
I agree completely.
They're not to carry a fund balance, it's to invest them, so thank you for that.
Yeah, you're welcome. And sorry, one more thing to your point on that. So in the pavement management plan, which is the plan that we reference for all our pavement projects moving forward. So we're with El Paso County and some of the other municipalities to all go in on updating that pavement management plan to bring the new numbers up to date. But the big thing that pavement management plan only focuses on is what's the curb gutter asphalt replacement cost? So each one of these projects is going to be more expensive if we're doing them correctly because we're addressing all the water, the storm, the sidewalks. You know, it, it will be more expensive than that. So that's my target is to get the foundation laid so we can be a year ahead every time.
So we're doing it all while we're in, in the street, so we don't tear it up again.
Correct.
So it's dig once.
Exactly, yeah.
All right, thank you. Okay, we do have Kip online, who I believe is going to go through the water pages. Kip, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Perfect. Good evening, everybody. Let's see, wastewater is up first. Wastewater is in a very strong position. As everyone will recall, we expanded the plant back in two thousand seventeen and eighteen. That expansion has served us well, so our capital expenses are also fairly small at this point in time. But we do have some, some things coming up. So, for example, we have some engineering coming up on the lift station. That's getting a little outdated and we want us to try to remove some trash. So we have some engineering to install a step screen in the future there. As far as the collection system, I have carried over another fifty thousand basically to cover, we have some manholes that are, that are deteriorating. And we need to either replace them or line them, so that will cover that. We have a series of smaller items at the plant itself. We're repairing an outbuilding, the ultraviolet light system continues to, I'll say, struggle a little bit. But we're getting a grasp on that and we have eleven thousand dollars in there budgeted for that. We have a harmonic filter, you're probably asking what that is. Back when we did the expansion core or I R E A, or core, I guess, required this filtered so we didn't send dirty power back into the grid. That harmonic filter has seen its, its life. And we currently do not have one, we, we put this in the budget last year as well. We're kind of exploring other options because it is a pretty significant price tag. If it only lasts a couple of years, we do, we do not want to. Um, we're kind of exploring other options because it is a pretty significant price tag. If it only lasts a couple of years, we do, we do not want to continue down that road. So we're just carrying it in and in IRA or core um has not come back to us yet to uh replace it immediately. So. Hopefully it's not even needed. Um, but uh, we'll see. A couple of other minor things, a filter pump and fence relocation. Um, the fence on the north side of property is actually not on our property, a portion of it. So we're looking at relocating that as well. And then machinery and equipment, uh, we'll continue with the loader lease program. And you see that in there as well. Um, as well as the, the vacuum upgrade that we've been trying to do for the last eighteen months. So we've carried that over. Any questions on wastewater? Okay. Water. Um, exciting news with water obviously is that the reservoir, I want to touch on that first. Uh, we have continued to carry that over. Um, hopeful we can start spending um some of that budgeted money this year. Uh, but uh, we're working on bringing that to council hopefully in the next. Couple of weeks. I would love to um have another executive session. With counsel and the attorneys in regards to that. That's the biggest news. Um. We do have the continued meter replacement program uh for two hundred and fifty thousand. Um, as we now have three folks, um, three full-time folks in the field service crew, we can start changing out those meters a little bit here and there. As we catch up with deferments as well. Um, I have a two-point-five million dollar placeholder in here for the gold hill tank. We're currently trying to um. Finalize the scope of work for the initial design of a gold hill tank. The reasoning for this is. Um, during the inspection last year. Um, the thickness of the walls on the tank are wearing thin due to ice buildup on the inside. Council might recall about, well, she's been five, five years now, four or five. Well, we repainted those tanks, the, the exterior. Um, we painted a darker color which has helped with uh the. Not having ice buildup as much because before it was uh light blue whitish color. Um, and ice would build up where the darker color seems to not allow the ice to build up. So I have. Um, a two-point-five million dollar ticket in here for gold hill tank. And then also, um, what you don't see on this list. Um, we have Twin Lake shares budgeted at um a hundred and twenty thousand, a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. Um, so I wanted to bring that to your attention. Uh, we also have a North Wellfield pump station upgrade of pumps. Um, the useful life of one of our pumps has expired and it's a smaller pump. We'd like to upgrade it to where. Uh, we can actually rotate through pumps so they're not running twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. So that's another hundred and twenty thousand for that project. And then also the, the back on upgrade, which we're carrying over from last year. Any questions on water?
So Kip, are you saying, only because it's a little hard to hear what you're saying? Um, the Northwell Field Pump Station, the pump has. Reached its life and you're doing a backup or what? I, I didn't quite understand what you got, Connor.
Um, so currently, um, we have three different sized pumps in there and due to uh demand. Um, our largest hundred horsepower pump runs continuously. It's where we have, uh, we have a second pump at a twenty-five horse. And a third pump, and I believe it's a seventy-five or a fifty horsepower pump. Um, the, one of the smaller pumps um has basically uh used its. It's full life, uh, because it's been running on non-stop. So we would like to upgrade one of those smaller pumps to have two hundred power horsepower. Pumps in there instead of just the one.
Got it. Thanks.
I apologize, you kids can't hear me that well.
All right, thank you, Kip. All right, so now we'll move into personnel. Um, so in this budget. We are requesting uh two-point-five additional FTEs in the general fund. Uh, one of them is for human resources. We're asking for an HR specialist. Uh, we're asking for also one additional facilities maintenance worker too. I think we've heard loud and clear that we want more maintenance and we want more. Uh, grooming and we want more a, all of those things. So we're asking for an additional maintenance worker in the budget and then we're also asking for point five. Conversion for a permit technician. We have currently two part-time permit technicians. We're asking to make one of those a full-time. So that, that is the ask here. And then um, we are removing the two uh economic development positions. So when we look at the next. Slide here, you can see the total ad is point five for this year's budget in the general fund um and no ads in the non-general funds. And we will go into a little bit into the narrative on those once we get into the department summary pages. All right, um. Debt service this year, we have no new or additional debt that is anticipated in twenty twenty-four. Uh, we have the Woodland Quatic Aquatic Center construction. Um, that's going to be seven hundred and four thousand this year. Uh, we have the loan for the. Wastewater plant, which is a hundred thousand debt service, and we also have another one for wastewater for three hundred and forty-nine thousand. So that's the, all the debt we have outstanding. Um, and the city funds. Uh, I realize I didn't put the two DDA um debt service on here, but that is in the budget as well. Um, the DDA had three, they paid up the city loan and they still have their other two outstanding. Okay, so here is the summary of all of the funds, um, twenty-two actual. Twenty-three adopted, projected, and then twenty-four proposed. Um, so you can see in the budget here, we have um an eight-point-three percent increase for the general fund. Um, grants, we have uh Voca, Vale. And our, our JAG grants, which basically. Totally cover our victim advocate services that we provide in this county. Um, then we have um the ARPA funds that are left over, which is what makes up that five hundred and thirty-five thousand in the two thousand twenty-four line. Uh, the DDA is. Lower than it was last year and that's because of the. Um, debt service going away for the city, so they don't have to pay the city the hundred and twenty thousand dollars they would have paid us. Uh, this year in the budget, we have Culture and Rec, um, is up ten-point-five percent. Uh, Streets Capital, you can see is way up over last year, um, with seven-point-eight million dollars program. So they're up twenty-nine percent over last year's. Uh, stormwater is pretty much flat, two-point-four percent increase. Uh, wastewater is down one-point-three percent and water is up twenty-nine-point-six and that is due to all the capital. Purchases that they have that we just went over. All right, so general fund revenues. All right, if we look at this chart here, we can see where most of the money comes from, from the general fund and it is mostly through taxes. So taxes make up eighty percent of our general fund revenues in the budget. Uh, then we have charges for service, a hundred and twenty-nine thousand. We have fines and forfeitures, fifty-seven thousand. Uh, intergovernmental, which is uh transfers. Uh, I'm sorry, that's not transfers. Intergovernmental is our grants and different items we have for that, sixteen hundred and seventy. We have our license and permits at one hundred and thirty-four. Specific ownership, which is really part of property tax, also two hundred and fifty thousand. And then we have our operating transfers. Um, and other operating items, which are one-point-eight million.
Aaron, quick question?
Sure.
Um, on the eighty percent taxes, what's the breakup for property tax versus sales tax?
Good question. Um, let's see. Should be about seventeen percent.
Should be, but.
Of course it raised. That's a good point.
All right, so property tax is two-point-three million. Sales tax, general fund is five-point-nine million. Specific ownership is two hundred and fifty thousand. And then we have our use tax, which makes up about half a million. So. Property tax. Makes up about eighteen percent.
One percent.
And remember, three-point-two-five-four million is the pass-through to the school district.
Correct.
That is correct.
And then sales tax makes up about. Wait, like, yeah, forty-seven percent. I'm arguing myself. I do that all the time when I'm working on the budget, so. All right, then we go, no problem. Then we go into our general fund expenditures. And you can see the breakdown here of where we spend most of our money. Um, so you can see educational support, which is that three-point-two million dollars for the school is twenty-one percent. Uh, then we have general administration is fifteen percent. Uh, parks, building and grounds is eight percent. Uh, police operations is twenty-three. And this graph kind of just go over the place. Um, but this, this is the breakdown of, of our total operations. Any questions on that one? All right, then we have our all funds revenue. So our total revenues for the city is twenty-six-point-four million dollars. Uh, fifteen-point-five of that comes from the general fund. Uh, followed by three-point-two is for streets, two-point-nine is for water, two-point-five is for wastewater. Uh, one-point-four is for culture and rec. Um, and then the rest make up the little bit of the rest there. Uh, with one percent for stormwater, one percent lodging tax, one percent grants. Okay, and then on the next slide, we have our all funds expenditures. Our expenditures this year, thirty-four-point-nine million dollars, obviously a lot more than twenty-six. Point four, and that's mostly because we had fund balance that we're spending capital out of for this year, mostly in streets, water and wastewater. Um, in our all funds expenditures, we have general fund, which makes up forty-four-point-four-seven percent. We have water and wastewater, which make up um eighteen percent for water and seven percent for wastewater. And then streets is going to be very large this year because of all the capital and that's at twenty-two-point-three-six percent this year. All right, so that is the overview of this year's. Now I'll go into the department summaries and then we'll get into the five-year projections. All right, so um, basically when I do the department summaries, we're looking at anything significant that changed, either an add or removal in each fund. Um, so basically any change that we had, uh, we're trying to bring it out in the front here so that we're not having to look through and see. Uh, what didn't change, right? So the city council, the only major change that we had in here was the removal of the economic development. Signature events funding for fifteen thousand. And what we did is since we took this out of here, we did add it into the main street funding. Um, if council wishes to do that in the city manager budget. All right, so in the city manager budget, we do have that fifteen thousand to restore Main Street funding. Uh, and then we also have the addition of the HR position. Uh, we are asking for. Uh, this position to assist with human resources department with a variety of functions and will enable the HR manager to focus on strategic initiatives. That should improve staff recruitment and retention, which is obviously a major goal that we have. Right? To have the right people in the right places and to keep them there. So that's um why we're asking for that position and we do feel that it will be a major addition. Um, to the city. All right, for municipal court, uh, we are moving the teen court function from the police department to municipal court. Um, so we're going to add a twenty-four thousand dollars to the municipal court budget and that will be transferred out of the police departments to fund that. Hey, finance, we had no additional requests for two thousand twenty-four. Um, last year we had the request for the timekeeping system, which we are still working very diligently to bring online and make work for us. Uh, but there's nothing new added for this year. Information technology, we are looking to do the fiber project. So we have put two hundred and fifty thousand dollar capital request in the IT budget. To bring those next phases online and hopefully bring fiber throughout all of the city, which should be pretty awesome. Okay, um, interdepartmental, um, I talked about this a little bit in the executive summary, but um citywide contracts, we had just increases in our contracts, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Uh, ninety-one thousand of that is our workers' comp and property casualty insurance and twenty-five thousand of that is for custodial services. Okay, police, we have um a request for four additional patrol vehicles. Um, these are requested to replace aging vehicles with high mileage. Um, the request for the four is two hundred thousand. Um, and then in here, we also have the twenty-four thousand dollars adjustment for the teen court negative. Uh, we did also move money around a couple of the other line items, but they were all just internal moves. We didn't do any additions in, other than these. In the lines. Okay, planning building. We have a conversion of one of our thirty-hour week employees to a full-time employee. Um, in two thousand twenty-four, and this is due to just uh a lot of requests for. Uh, building permits and just additional items that are going on in that department. We also have one of our most tenured employees. Um, that's going to be leaving. So we feel that now is the perfect time to transition that into a full-time position instead of the thirty hours. So we do feel that that will be a huge, huge help if we make this move. Um, we're also asking, um, in last year's budget, we had a budget in there for a permit tracking system. Um, and we're asking for thirty thousand dollars increase in professional services to assist with um doing a lot of the legwork and bringing that fully online. Um, so we're asking for a thirty thousand dollar increase for professional services to be able to assist with that process and still do all of our main functions so that this gets the attention it needs. Because uh, we do feel that once that system is online, it's going to make things a lot easier for our builders and a permit tracking. So. Um, that, that's the thought process behind that one. And then the last one is a twelve thousand dollar request for the Historic Preservation Committee for the. Design and engineering on the Midland Railroad baggage building. We are actively going after grants for this. But we want to have it in the budget, um, in case they need a match. We're not exactly sure what the match might be. So we're asking for the full amount in the budget. We don't anticipate needing to use it all, but we would like to have it there just in case we need it. Yes.
Have we got the asbestos? Um, remediated? Who's the historic preservation?
I'll defer to Karen on that one.
Have we gotten that asbestos out of the uh, the baggage?
That was, that was completed earlier this year, yes.
Thank you.
And that was also done partly with um, uh, funding from a couple of different sources. Uh, you may recall the DDA contributed to that. As did a, a grant from on the Newmont Mine that um Carol Harvey had helped obtain back. In her many different roles that she has played here in the city. So.
I remember we were starting that. Chasing the money. I didn't know if it was executed, which means this is a smart thing now that we can move forward. So.
Yes, I, I agree.
Aaron, I have another question for planning. Are we looking at projecting for the need of extra hours for a code enforcement officer? This, no matter what happens in December, it may be necessary that we have um. Either a part-time or full, full-time code enforcement officer added to the staff.
So my thought process on that as we were going through, um, was we, we will be bringing back the Good Neighbor Guidelines once we, once we get a, a feeling on that. And our recommended fee would be to offset that. So I would imagine bringing back a supplemental to offset whatever revenue we're going to bring in with, with that expense. I don't know, Karen, did you have anything to add?
I was just gonna say, that's not part of what's currently in front of you in the budget. So um, yeah, Aaron did a great job with the. You'll see this again.
Yeah.
So Aaron, you've got a, a point-two-five of an employee included in here and I don't see it reflected where you have employees because you was going from a thirty-hour to forty-hour. Conversion of a part-time to a full-time.
Hmm. Wow, did we not?
No, uh, part of what's going on is you've got two part-time employees that each are thirty hours. So um, you're taking one of the thirty-hour positions and increasing it by twenty-five percent to a full-time position. So that's why it's.
Just, yeah, that's fine. I just didn't see it on the, where you put the other calculation of your two-point-five.
Is that it? I didn't, I didn't put the change in here. Yeah, it, it's in the top, but it's not in the bottom. Thank you for, we'll get that fixed.
All right.
Yeah. Six is the accurate number. It's just the change from twenty-three is not reflected correctly.
Aaron, I know that, I know that you're also looking at grants for the um Roberts House.
Correct.
Is that something that's further out than we needed to be anticipating that in this budget?
We are anticipating that this twelve thousand will cover both.
Thank you.
That's, yeah, thank you for reminding me on that one. Okay, that's page fifty-two. Sorry, making a note of the changes we need. All right, here we go. Okay, um, no, any questions on that? Okay, uh, we'll move on to public work.
That was me.
Oh, sorry. I thought that was me and I'm like, how did I do that? I hope we don't have any. All right, so Public Works, uh. That's right. That new slanted roof is going to be up there in no time. Okay, the uh. We have a request for the two vehicles in facilities and grounds for a hundred and twenty thousand. That's an F-one-fifty and an F-three-fifty and those are both replacements. Uh, for existing vehicles that are either old or have high mileage. Uh, we have one vehicle request for fleet maintenance, seventy-seven thousand. That is an F-two-fifty with a utility body, also a replacement. We have um, a request for two tool cat leases in facilities and grounds, which is twenty thousand dollars. And basically that allows us to switch those out. I believe it's every two years and get a new one so that we're always um having a vehicle that actually works. And can do the things that we needed to do. Uh, we have the maintenance worker two request for facilities and ground, which is fifty thousand and that is an ongoing. And then we have capital outlay for Meadowwood Sports Complex and also for the median statues. So fifty thousand for Meadowwood Park. And we do anticipate that being a grant match for pickleball courts and those things. And then the capital outlay for the median statues, Ben, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about those.
Yes, so the idea between the media improvements is to remove a lot of the greenscape out of the medians and do a stamped concrete and then install bases. So that the art, there can be rotating art if we want to, we can keep permanent art there, but just giving the most options possible. So there'd be approximately twenty two locations throughout the medians for art, and so that would. Oh, sorry, there's eleven medians, but yeah, twenty two locations. There's, there'd be about two per island, so there's a lot of options there for flexibility and we want to do this just right one time and then submit for the median, the art. Through C dot just one time for that permit approval. So this median statues is for the statues themselves to be mounted in the medians, whereas the median improvements, the bases, the stamped concrete would come out of the four ten fund because it's a street improvement.
And Erin, while we're on that slide, just to make the budget actually read better in the executive summary. If you go back to page number seven. Where you look at slide fourteen, packet. Where you, it was confusing to me where I saw a hundred ninety seven thousand will be used to replace two vehicles. F one fifty and an F three fifty in facilities and grounds, period.
Yeah.
It's not a hundred ninety seven thousand for those two grammatically, it's actually to replace three vehicles. Those two are one twenty. The third one, which is in, in the fleet maintenance is the seventy seven. Your chart captures the grammatical error, and I don't want to take time to show you where it is in here. But if you could find the paragraph that talks to that slide.
Got it.
Your narrative actually doesn't have a grammatical thing and it caused me to scratch my head. And go back into the detail to figure it out.
Understood, we'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
And then going back to the median statue, so we have forty seven thousand in here and that's for five of the statues. We are hoping to partner with some of the businesses and possibly get some others put in, so we're hoping to do more than this, but. This is what we have right now initially is for five statues, just to be clear about that.
Something else for a truck ticket.
That's what I was gonna say.
We're always trying to make it fun up here, right? That's, that's our goal. I wanted palm trees, they all, you know, voted me down. I was like, fine, you know what? You know what? Palm trees.
You know, we had a great controversy when the palm trees, plastic palm trees went in at the dinosaur resource center, so I wouldn't go there.
It was a joke, just for, just for the record.
Dinosaurs don't think it's fun.
Oh, my goodness. All right, so that's it for the general fund items. Now we're moving into culture and rec.
That's a good thought. We could approach the dinosaur museum to get one of the statues and Main Street to be a dinosaur.
That's right.
There we go.
There's probably all kinds of cool ideas that we could have for that, so I am excited to see what those look like when we get them in. All right, so culture and rec, we had three budget adjustments in culture and rec. All of these were for the aquatic center. We had chemical controller replacements, fifteen, fifty two hundred dollars. Deck storage for six thousand and HVAC, this was a mandated cost on this for the service provider for twenty five hundred dollars. Wastewater and water, Kip already went through each one of the items that are in here. If, do you have any additional questions you'd like anything back on from these? All right, and then for the grants fund, as I said, we do have four hundred and eleven thousand dollars left in the ARPA funding, which we will be appropriating all of it. We're going to use the vast majority of it on the U-Pass Cultural Center for fire suppression, HVAC and anything else that comes up in those projects as we're going through because. We seem to, every, every time we do anything in there, we seem to find that we need to add something to it, so I think hopefully that will cover what we have left. And then we'll have the grant match for the Meadowwood Park study for twenty five thousand. Okay, DDA, as I said, no additions, but Rusty will get that item fixed on that page there.
Question on that, if you don't mind, does the one point three million take into account the payoff? Of the loan and the sale of the land?
It does.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is, it would have been one point five something if we wouldn't, you know, if the land value was still in there at the higher value. But thi- this, this is final, one point three.
The land has come off the books for, okay.
Correct. Yeah, I had, I had a nice conversation with the auditors about what that looks like. It has, yeah. And I'm like, do I need to book an adjustment? Sorry. Okay, we'll keep going. Lodging tax, we went through that. There's no additions. Our new request for the twenty four budget. Conservation trust fund remains the same. And then streets, I don't, did you have anything additional you wanted to add for streets that we haven't covered? Okay. Go ahead. Yep. Oh, yes, yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah, so another improvement for the streets capital fund is the cemetery expansion, which includes roadways around that second half of the cemetery and the columbariums. So that was also a six hundred fifty thousand dollar expense that's under that line item. It's programmed for twenty twenty four.
We are going to have some fun out on the streets next year.
And we're going to be burying some people.
That's. Again, for the record, a joke, no. All right, stormwater, there really is no change in here. The transfer is a hundred and sixty five thousand. That supports the servicing of stormwater projects next year. All right, so that's it for the twenty four budget. Now we'll move into the five year plans and our CIP anticipations for the next five years. Okay, so the five year plan, it is recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association. It provides much greater insight into the city's financial capabilities to meet current and long term service level obligations. I mean, honestly, to approve anything in a current year when you don't know what's going to happen in the next three to five years, it's, how do you even make that decision? So I feel like this is great that we have this now put in place and it gives us much better transparency. All right, so this is the general fund projections for twenty four through twenty eight. This is our revenues and expenditures year over year. So you can see in twenty four, if you look at that first column, we are projecting that our expenditures will be more than our revenues and that is mostly all capital. We are doing a lot of additional capital items, the two hundred and fifty thousand for fiber, the vehicles, et cetera, et cetera. We have an over, overage in twenty four, and then if you see twenty five to twenty eight. We do anticipate having a healthy fund balance going forward, so we should be able to maintain that seventeen to twenty percent unrestricted fund balance going forward.
What, what did you use to do those projections? Just a three percent straight line or did you use different percentage?
Yeah, so for, if you look at the next slide. We have a growth rate, which is our sales tax revenue. I have an increase of three percent a year. Property tax, we have the ten percent I projected for this year, and then it's six, three, it actually. It should be six, three, six, three, as we normally do it, but I think I switched the six and the three around. But tha- that's, that's how that projection goes. Inflation, I have two and a half percent for next year. The economy is looking much healthier than they anticipated the month ago when I did put this together. I don't know, inflation could be two and a half, it could be three, we're not exactly sure, but they do project over time that it's going to go back down to about two percent. So twenty five through twenty eight, we have two percent. Health insurance, whether we fund it or not, we do project it at eight percent. Utilities, four percent, insurance and workers' comp, that's always a big one. We have that eight percent increase. Cost of living, we have two percent, which should kind of match what the inflation rate is. And then our retirement contributions, which those are anticipated to stay the same. So that's where we, that's where we come up, but then those are, those are allocated across every single item in the budget.
Yeah.
All right, so then we have, this is a breakdown of where the revenue comes from for twenty four through twenty eight. And you can see taxes will continue to be our, our main driver for the, the revenue there, so we have fifteen point two million in twenty four. And then by the time we get to twenty eight, we're projecting sixteen point nine million. So that's how, that's how it looks. It's about, it should be about a three percent or so growth every year. Okay, then we have five years of expenditures, so expenditures growing kind of similarly to our revenues because they're using those. Inflation and growth metrics that we just looked at, so you can see five point five million in twenty four, sixteen point eight million in twenty eight. And it, it's based off of these exact figures of how it's calculated. Okay, and then we have our all funds expenditures, so that you can see twenty four is obviously the biggest one because we had some streets items. That were a lot larger than we will in the out years and also water projects, so thirty five point four million, thirty five point one million in twenty four. And then as we go, it pretty, it stays pretty consistent, twenty five, we're at twenty nine million, then it goes to twenty seven, twenty eight and a half, twenty nine and a half. And that is largely, the differences you're seeing there are largely due to capital projects. So it's what, what we have budgeted. I know water had some big ones and I think twenty five and twenty eight for the water reservoir and some of those other items. Okay, and this is kind of how it looks for the five year expenditures.
And you bet to the water.
Sure.
So you're planning in this the cost for the reservoir?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and we do hope, we'd hope to get some grant match and some other things, but we budgeted most of the money that we'd have to put out in here to be conservative. And then if we get grants, great, we'll have extra fund balance. All right. So now, okay, now we're done with the five year. Now we'll look at the capital improvement items. So you can see in twenty four, we have larger capital expenditures than we're anticipating for the out years because of, it's mostly because of streets and water. So we're looking at eleven million dollars in twenty four. And then we have six point seven in twenty five, four million in twenty six, four and a half in twenty seven, and then four point two in twenty eight. And this is kind of the overview of, of where that gets broken down. You can see water makes up about ten million of that, streets makes up almost fifteen million. Generals, one point five, grants is four eleven and wastewater is three point four. Now, general fund does not include, because we haven't actually programmed anything, it doesn't include that two point four million dollar capital reserve that we put in there. So general fund, we would anticipate being more like four, four million over the five years, once we actually program that two point four million dollar reserve. That's the thought. All right, and that's, that's all I have for you. I wanted you to have a little bit of time to discuss. I left you a few minutes.
Thank you, Erin. I just want, I want to thank you, Erin, for getting a five year plan in place when I first started on council. That was, that was fireworks, Steve, and dare to talk about that. So thank you for, in your capacity, not as a city manager, but as a finance director, of really putting that in place. And I'll speak for myself, giving us a greater confidence of transparency in the books, and that's huge, that's huge, so thank you.
Very welcome.
So I just had one question. I wanted to wait till we made it all the way through. Sure. I didn't interrupt. On the police, the four vehicles, are those in addition to the four vehicles that we approved two years ago?
They are.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we're going through, we had a lot of aged vehicles.
Oh, that's, I, I just want to make sure we're getting more cars and it's not the same four.
No, they're, they're all replacements. No, trust me, the, the chief is. The chief is unbelievable at buying vehicles. Everybody else having supply chain issues, the chief is like, hey, look, I just pulled up with a new one. So I don't know how he does it. We're trying to learn.
Probably stolen.
It's probably.
Erin, I just have one, just overall philosophical question, or really just. Are we doing enough? Are we, are we doing enough for our employees as far as wages are concerned? To try to offset some of the frustrations with hiring, the frustrations with retaining and getting quality. And providing, one of our goals was providing the tools they need to do their job.
Yes.
And I'm, and when I say that, I mean all employees, not just general fund, because there's a lot of employees in our, in our enterprise funds that. As well, so I just want to be sure that we're. Doing what we need to do and what's necessary to do the right thing to close that gap.
That, that is an excellent question. I know Amy and I work very closely looking at the market. My, what I always say is I want to be in the market on every position, so we have been working very hard. Amy has done truly a phenomenal job looking at our utilities crews, looking at pretty much across the board. What, what can we do to be competitive and in the market so that we're not in the situation that you're, you're referring to? So yes, I think we are, I think we are doing.
And where, did we ask the employers' council where that inflation number is, where they're seeing? We're, are we adjusting our ranges and adjusting our salaries? Are we taking that whole compensation plan into consideration in what we've budgeted? And would you say that the department heads who really have that feedback from the line people? Are in agreement and on the same page with what you're, what's being told to us this year?
You bet. So I currently, when we're looking at the market, we are using employers' council. And we're using CML. Those are our two sources. I'm also in my network of HR professionals within other municipalities, constantly talking to them and sharing information. And right now, after our last compensation study and over the past three years. We are working towards being very much in the market. As Erin said, we are working with our directors to make sure that our employees are feeling valued. And through that, looking at what can we do for our employees? So yes, we are looking at that.
And knowing that that's an ongoing cost, it's not like spending our fund balance on capital because you don't spend fund balance on anything that's not a one time expenditure. Because ongoing expenses grow each period as we know. But I just want, I just want, we have the resources. To be able to do what we need to do, to get our employees where they need to be, so that we're not paying, playing catch up. I can't tell you how many times I've gone through that in the twenty five years, playing catch up with our pay structure. So it's, I'm really sensitive to that and I just want to be sure that we're doing all we can. To, to be in the market and to be competitive with quality, high class, high quality, not class. Wrong word.
Why not?
Wrong word. Employees, but because it's, it's, it is our bread and butter, it is what makes us shine, it is what makes us look good and it is what makes. The services to our community what it is and the best it could be, so I'll shut up now, thank you.
No, I truly appreciate you saying that, Kelly. Our employees are so important.
Absolutely.
And providing the services that our citizens need.
Absolutely. Thank you. When was the last salary survey and when will the next one be?
So currently, our last survey was three years ago. And what we're doing currently is actually looking by department. So I'm evaluating, Erin and I and all of the directors as a team are evaluating every single position in every single department. And looking at career progression plans.
So to add on, we did, with the last study we did was in April of twenty two. So, yeah, it's been, yeah, it's been, it hasn't been quite three years. What my thought process was, as Amy said, to, for us to keep looking at it internally to make sure that we feel like we're in the right place on all of the positions. I like to say we want the right people in the right places, right? And then we want them doing the right thing, so that's kind of my thought process on it. I think in twenty five is when we'll ask for the next study. But for right now, I think we'd like to individually look at the positions and make sure we have the right ones and then do the study once we have them in the right, if that makes sense.
It does.
And, and I do have a comment on this very topic. I laud your comment that we have enough, but I do want to point out that I appreciate. How you've decided to do the compensation. I think for three years, Robert and I have been asking for a compensation based or a merit based component. And last year, I think we had a three percent across the board or something like that. I was thrilled when I saw a two percent across the board. But then I saw the two hundred and sixty six thousand that now you can take your high performers and give them that extra bump. And, and to, to your point, we have money. If two sixty six is not quite enough for what you need to reward the people, I would be okay with that being a little bit more, so you have more to reward. As long as you feel comfortable, you got enough, two sixty six, I'm good with. If you think about it and if not quite enough, two seventy, two eighty, as long as it goes into the merit based. Category.
Okay.
And then the flat is the two percent. I really do appreciate you going down to one percent. And then let's incentivize good performance and I hope that's in line with what you've been trying to do with me for three years, so I was thrilled when I read that.
I'll agree with you. We had a merit based system when I left the city. It wasn't perfect, but it was something to reward high performers and to encourage performers that maybe aren't as expected. So I agree with you. Thank you.
Robert, I don't know if you wanted to say. Okay, that's good.
Thank you very.
No, there's a, there's a lot in this, in this budget that has evolved over the, over the three years plus that we've been on, on council. So I see a lot of good things, you know, I had the area that I want to take our attention to. I had, the area that I wanna take our attention to is our citizens. Uh, we are responsible for their dollar. And, uh, they have all, they haven't experienced it yet, but they've seen it. And that is their property taxes are, uh, going up by thirty percent. Uh, at least in the Woodland Park area. So I have four or five areas that I like to kind of talk about. So. It pains me that our, uh, our aquatic center continues with fabulous effort, by the way. On your, on your part and your staff's part, uh, to be costing us escalating, escalating, escalating. It is, it is a. I guess in sales, you'd probably call it a lost leader. We're constantly having to pay for it. We had, we had wanted to, uh, allocate funds, uh, in the, uh, general fund, unallocated funds to to pay off that as soon as we can. We, last year, we were able to give back, uh, uh, to, to pay off the the park. So we allocated, I think, a million dollars or more towards that. Uh, from the surplus that we had. And now interest rates have changed, so you're gonna have to argue whether it's smart to put that sort of money aside for. Uh, for the paying off the, of the pool, but that's what, seven, over seven million dollars yet to pay on the pool, right? So it really is, um, not just that, which is, I think, about three quarters of a million dollars to pay off principal and interest on the pool. Plus another half a million to operate it. So, um. I'm, I'm pointing that out to say, okay, I get it. There's enough citizens who who find value in that. How to make it less painful for them? Uh, I'd like us to look at, and I've talked about this too in our one-on-one meetings, I'd like to see us somehow. I mean, a parent goes to watch their kid, they have to pay for it. That does, doesn't make a lot of sense to me in terms of goodwill to the community. I think the city wants to be looking at, how do we manage your funds right, but also give back to you so you're not feeling. Uh, an attitude because you're using a facility we want more people to use. And a lot of times we think, oh, you know, we have to charge, 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 and and that's how we're gonna capture it versus how much. We're gonna get back on creating goodwill, so I just, I seed that thought with you. I know you guys are gonna look into it some more. Um, but it goes back to our dollars that we're stewarding for the, for the community. And. So if that money is not going, if if we're just accepting at the moment because of where the state of the economy is, that that money. Is probably not best held for paying off the pool early. Um, the community is experiencing higher, um, property taxes. And I would like to see us allocate that back as a permanent reduction to our community. I I like the fact that we've got two percent a mil rate or two, uh, two mills going back in your proposed budget. But I would propose we put another two mil permanent to go back to the citizens. So they're gonna see, and I I don't know what the county's doing, but I'd like to see us, um. Working with the community and thinking with them. It's like, yeah, we've got really good services, we've got good staff, we've got good. Uh, development happening, long-term projections now in a lot of directions. I think that we need to also trust our citizens and go, hey, you know what? We got a healthy reserve, you're gonna feel it this year. Prices may stabilize, they may go down a little. Um, but I'd like to suggest that we look at, consider that and see what that would look like. I think. Well, what would that look like? What would two percent of a permanent mill, uh, rate reduction look like to the citizens and to this budget? Two mills. Oh, yeah, it's two mills, yeah, misspoke, two mills.
So two, two mills is what I've, um, projected here on this sheet.
Right, and so it's about one hundred and seventy five per mil, right?
Yeah, so if you. If you're, if you're proposing two temporary and two permanent, it would just be double this number.
Okay. And then so that, and then on your, on your reserve budget, what would that put our reserve down to?
Um.
Cause, uh, you got, you got it five percent more than what we're carrying this year, correct?
Correct, so if we look at. Did I? Closed out of my budget presentation. Okay, if we look at.
Yeah, I have the same concern as Robert does with the reserve fund being at twenty two percent and.
It's fifty percent right now, but.
Well, yeah, I know, but. You're projecting twenty two percent for next year, twenty one point nine, and we're carrying currently seventeen, and that's actually. That's the citizens' money we're sitting there looking at, so. Trying to understand why this is going up and above what we agreed to and. As council many years ago to keep it around seventeen percent.
So if we, if we look at the five-year projections, if we do an additional two percent. It would cost in twenty five, you can see. Three, it would be an additional three hundred and forty seven thousand on top of what we were, I'm already projecting. So we, it would impact us ongoing, because that, if you take it away permanently, it would be a permanent ongoing reduction. And then on top of that, whatever the increase I had projected, which I think was three percent, it would be even less, so it. You're talking about at least three hundred and fifty thousand a year ongoing in our, in reducing our revenues, so it would affect our bottom line. In the out years, that tha- that's the, that's how it would look, because it's, it would be ongoing. We'd be, we wouldn't just be taking it out of the fund balance, we'd be taking it out of our revenues in perpetuity.
I I re- I re- I do recognize that, and I don't think that's a problem. I think we've showed good stewardship in the city, we showed good forward-thinking in the city. And, uh, I think that if it got to the point that it was an issue, we could go back to the citizens. But at this point, I think that the citizens are the one who are going, hey, you guys are all doing really well, and I'm just taking the devil's advocate of looking at. Them versus us, government versus citizens, going, yeah, you guys are doing great, all, you've made all these really great, safe projections on our. On our dime from what we've had increased pay in property taxes, what are you doing to benefit? To show us that we're doing this together, and that's why I talk about the pool and the usage of it. And what are we doing in terms of a, a, a gesture of, of, we recognize this is, you're taking a hit. Uh, in this, in this tax cycle. Um, and we're prepared to journey together with you on that, not just play it safe for us and, and they have to fend for themselves. So I I think it's not an unreasonable request to, to, uh, have a permanent reduction. And, uh, from the looks of the numbers, yeah, it's gonna, it's gonna change your five years for sure, but. There's lots of, of, of tweaking that can be modified with that. We see every year I've been here, we end each year stronger than we started. Every year we end up stronger than we started, and there's unforeseen things like, I get it, you know, we didn't fill all the staff positions and things, but. Um. It just helps build community to me, and I think that's worth its weight in gold.
Counsel, I'd just like to weigh in, cause I've been through. Um, when we've had great success and great years, many years in a row, and we had thirteen years of downturn. And we lost, we had to lay people off. We had, and you never know when that's coming. Um, I have been through that twice, and it's not fun. And, um, it, services were compromised. People lost their jobs, and. So unless we have a very thorough, and I've said this every time you've brought this up. Analysis of the long-term repercussions of a permanent mill levy reduction. And until the DDA is, and those in interrupted revenues go back to the taxing districts. And while we have an opportunity. To experience a mill levy reduction on a temporary basis. Thankful to our county commissioners, our legislators, we have the opportunity to do that and feel that. And, um, I absolutely am in favor of using that tool that's been provided to us in conjunction with our other taxing authorities. And we had a number of them at our initial meeting. Um, to, to give relief. Quickly and immediately to our public. A long-term permanent mill levy reduction, I will never approve without proper analysis. By, um, staff and considering it in conjunction with, um. The DDA. So that's my two cents, and, um. I just think it's completely irresponsible and good conservative financial management.
That's awesome, so that means you are willing to have it evaluated, so we could actually have the staff go ahead and an- analyze this and see. How that would affect us.
I think they have, we have one right in front of us this evening.
We have, but not a permanent reduction that I'm, I'm suggesting.
Whether it's.
So you, that's awesome. I'm glad you agree with me that we can analyze this, that's.
I will after the DDA's gone. Or after I'm gone. But today.
Be that, yeah.
Today, I'm willing to entertain a conversation about what our temporary reduction should be. Um, we have an example of two that's built into our budget. We haven't made that decision yet, maybe it's three. And then we evaluate it again next year. We have the opportunity to use a tool. To see what that looks like and feels like for real. With operations and see at the end of the year what it looks like. This is a plan. It will be very different by the time the year is over. And, um, I'm speaking from twenty five years of experience doing this. Ups and downs, different economic conditions. And I'm, I am telling you that it is irresponsible. And we have an opportunity to do a temporary on an annual basis. See what it looks like, see what it feels like. I'm absolutely on board.
I'm gonna go ahead and end this conversation. We've got six minutes before council starts. We're still going to talk about the budget.
Thank you.
Finished having conversations about the budget, so save your questions for the next time we have this on the agenda, or if we have another work session. Let's go ahead and, um, end this work session and be back here at six thirty, please.